I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, members of the audience, if you could please remain standing for a moment of silence with staff members that have recently passed away, Ms. Anne Cato, Mary Smith, Fran Amari, and Mr. Tom Tracy, may they rest in peace. Thank you.
And last superintendent to do roll call.
Mr. Austin.
Present.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Here.
Mr. Lipsit.
Present.
Mr. Morenne.
Present.
Ms. Wetzel.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
Oh, there we go. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda or approval of 11, 10, 25 school committee amendments?
Motion approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak a public comment? If you do, come up to the desk and state your name and address, and you have three minutes time, and you are being recorded.
Good evening, Nancy Ripple, Two Gately Trump. Good evening. I'd first like to make it clear that I'm speaking only for myself, and I am not representing any of my fellow para-professionals within the Woben Public School System. But I'm here to request better professional development for the paras. So far this year, we have had four professional development days. Each and every one of them, I've been watching videos and reading them by myself in front of my phone book. I get that you have to check the boxes with Desi, but really, there'd be a lot better if we could get together with these presentations, watch them, and then talk to each other about what is being presented, and see, we can learn from each other. Where we quite fill in out at the end of these things, a note catcher. But who is reading this? And are we graded on this? Where is this going? The first thing we had to watch this year was your first three months as a para. That would have been great during my first year as a para, but this is my third year. It was not helpful to me at all. Last year, we were assigned modulators to watch. Again, we sat by ourselves and watched the videos, and we're doing this in our buildings because we're not allowed to leave for them. This particular program had several modulators, but we were only assigned some of them. I did look through some of the other offerings. One of them was how to avoid burnout as a para. That one sounded great, but it was not one of the ones we were assigned. Either on my first or second year, I don't remember now, we had a session on internet safety. Sounds great, but really, it was a presentation by a woman who wrote a book about it, and pretty much just talked about her book and promoted her book. The FBI has a division just on internet predators. Why not have someone from there come in and give us a presentation? Someone who deals with this daily and could provide advice for us without promoting a book. On Election Day, all the paras and teachers gathered together for an "I love you guys" presentation. It was pretty much the same presentation we got last year, but it didn't, we didn't do any examples or displays of what a reunification might look like. And even when we did that last year, it was really hard to see in what was happening. Why aren't we doing a real drill? One where we do a lockdown and a mock reunification? For me at least, that would be much better and more meaningful than listening to someone talk on and on and just give statistics. All of our classrooms last year, or within the last year or two, were given a "stop the bleed" bag. In my three years there, I have yet to have an in-person training on what to do with any of these, the things that are in this bag. That would be another great PD to offer. I know we have to do professional development, and I don't mind that. But we have first-year paras and paras who have been there for 20-plus years. Everyone has something that they could add from their experience, and that could be helpful. Why aren't we learning from each other? I want to have some professional developments that are interactive and useful to what we do day in and day out, and not just sitting in front of my phone book. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the committee?
My name is Blake Goodwin, six-year resident at 91 Mishum Road, here to speak on behalf of support for the transitional areas, for the redistricting, I think is one of the terms we just used recently, for a couple of reasons. A primary one being to kind of, I think, put a pin in the limbo that everybody in these components that are scheduled to move to the new district map, to really put a solution in place so that we're not kind of experiencing this year in and year out for the next three, four years, or whatever it might be. And also, I think somewhat obviously, to minimize the impact on any families and students that might have to move in the components that are identified. You know, when this first happened, we've been following this process. We have first graders at Hurd Wyman, and our component was identified as one of the ones that would ultimately have to move. And in kindergarten, that was like, okay, and then it was kind of left, well, we'll wait to see what the next step is. And now, even six months into first grade, we're that much more entrenched in the Hurd Wyman community. So I think there's a, there's a potential big impact there on moving kids across the elementary schools. I know there's been some concern voiced about, you know, the potential awkwardness of having neighbors in the same neighborhoods at different schools, and I would argue that that already exists with district boundaries as it is. There is also already a gray component in place as part of last year's move, and I think that, to a degree, that is, you know, slightly theoretical compared to the actual impact of kids that will be moving. So I think that the buffer zones or transitional zones or gray zones, whatever we want to call them, is a good solution to, to move forward with. I respect all the work that everybody's done. I never thought I'd be involved in anything like this. Kudos to everybody, so, great job.
Thank you, Blake. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address?
Alex Sissel, five, Majority Lane. I'd like to take a few minutes tonight to speak on behalf of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, the CPAC, on whose board I currently serve. As you know, CPAC, one of CPAC's central goals is to advocate for student and program needs across the district. One program that consistently receives overwhelming support from our members is the Therapy Dog Program, which currently runs every Friday at Goodyear Elementary. Families routinely express appreciation for this program and a strong desire to see it expanded district-wide. Its benefits far outweigh its relatively small cost. Two recent situations come to mind that highlight the real tangible impact of this low-cost intervention. A friend told me about a morning when his second grader absolutely refused to get out of the car. Full meltdown, the kind of moment where you're just hoping a miracle will happen, and your kid will just walk into the building. The miracle that turned out to be that day was to be Lily, the therapy dog. The instant his child saw her at the entrance, their entire body relaxed, and they happily ran into the school. In another instance, a student experienced significant emotional dysregulation was brought out of the classroom. They were given a few minutes to sit with Lily. That simple, low-intensity intervention was enough to help them regulate and return to class to finish their day successfully. There are countless stories just like these, not only from Goodyear, but from districts across the country. Last year, a Tennessee district piloted therapy dogs in five public schools. The outcomes were overwhelmingly positive: measurable improvements in student well-being, staff morale, and overall school climate. Some schools saw improved attendance, with therapy dogs cited as a motivating factor for students. Mental health engagement increased as more students voluntarily sought assistance and reported that they felt more at ease talking in the dog's presence. Teachers reported better academic engagement, particularly among students with anxiety or behavioral challenges, as the dogs helped them stay calmer and more focused during instructional time. Several schools even saw reductions in discipline referrals. Therapy dogs are a high-impact, low-cost tool that's strengthening every other support we offer. They act as a force multiplier, enhancing counseling, special education services, and classroom management. They help students who struggle socially to experience safe, low-pressure connection. They help dysregulated classrooms settle more quickly, giving teachers more time to teach and less time managing behavior. Therapy dogs amplify the success of our entire support system, creating calmer, more connected, and more effective learning environments. We want to thank both Principal Patricey and Dr. Ryan for their ongoing support of this program. As a CPAC, we want to recognize the value of that leadership and express our hope that expanding this program district-wide can become a goal for the future, so more students and staff can benefit from what has already been proven to be an effective and beloved resource. Thank you.
Good job, right on three minutes. Anybody else?
The comment was good, too.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to address the committee? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. And I don't see Chuck or Rob in the audience, so we'll move on. And we do have a student representative tonight. Arianna?
Hi.
Oh, sorry.
Hi.
You were hidden.
We have two.
Okay, there you go. Whoever wants to go first?
Yeah, I can go first. So, everything seems to be going very well so far. Just this weekend and a few days prior, we had Shrek the Musical. It went very well. I have a few friends that participated in it, and a lot of them, they just went on and on about it. It was really interesting. They put a lot of time and effort into the props and everything. It was really great. This Friday, we have the Senior Holiday Dance. Winter sports have started. They start games either this weekend or early next week, so I'll be competing this weekend for wrestling. It'll be, it'll be fun. Big team event. Do you want to go?
So, for the in-school stuff, we have opening up more bathrooms, unsupervised bathrooms, so none of their teachers have to spend their study time to just sit at bathrooms. It's, I've personally seen more improvement in it, less kids wandering around, but also, it seems to be working very well with the time that they're putting the unsupervised bathrooms going. The Learn Survive the Drive Club is doing a coat drive for coats for kids and families throughout the whole month of January, and the top three schools that sell the most, or not, sorry, donate the most clothes will be getting a, I want to say $1,000 fundraiser, $1,000 check. And the acapella choir is singing out at the State House coming up. I know some of my friends are in acapella, and they seem to be talking about it, and it seems like a pretty big event coming up.
Yeah. I also want to speak on the therapy dogs. It's been a while, but sixth grade, they brought in a therapy dog, and it was in health class. And I wouldn't say we got much experience with her, but the teacher told us we had to be quiet and calm for the dog to come in, and I think everyone, even the more rambunctious kids, settled down without the teacher really having to pressure us. So I think it was really effective in creating a calm learning environment.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, and she was cute.
That helps. Does anybody on the committee have any questions? Ms. Wetzel?
I just wanted to say shout out to the casting crew of Shrek. I saw it this weekend, fabulous production. My kids loved it. I can't say enough good things, so please send my regards, as well as my family's, and good luck, Ms. Gustaldi, this weekend and at your wrestling tournament. And then, community members, if we wanted to donate coats, would we just bring them to the high school?
Yeah, that's something you could do. You could bring them to the high school, or I'm sure, I'm always around the Joyce. I have track practice right there. You guys could just easily find me, and I could take the coats for you. But yeah, Mrs. Bakari seems to be picking up a lot of the coats at the high school. You could probably just, like, send it to the office. Nothing really complicated.
Thanks for doing that. Appreciate it.
Great. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Well, you guys can stay if you'd like, or you can leave if you want to, whatever you feel is, your wishes is what you can do.
Probably have homework.
Yeah.
Mr. Quail is right there.
And reports and presentations of students and staff will be made along with middle school?
So tonight, we have the school improvement, secondary school improvement plans, and so at this time, I believe it's a joint presentation.
Come on down.
Between, there's no walk-up music. So while they're, while they're making their way, so it's Mr. Mills, interim principal at the Joyce, and Mr. Nelson, the principal at the Kennedy Middle School. Before they get started, I just want to publicly thank Mr. Nelson. This is his last school improvement plan. He's been the principal at the Kennedy Middle School for 26 years, and so, to Mr. Nelson, thank you for your leadership over the past 26 years. And so, at this, and this is Mr. Mills' first school improvement plan, so.
Opposite ends. Passing of the torch.
So with that being said, I'll turn it over to you guys.
So thanks. You can see here's the Joyce and Kenny School Improvement Plan. You have the full plan in front of you, and it'll be available on the district website also, the full plan. There's a summary up on the next slide of the three district initiatives from the district.
Strategic Plan, oh, it's another thing. Automatic voice, it's AI. Take it, boy, it's totally.
And these should be the same that you saw from the elementary presentation. Third slide is School Instructional Priorities, Design Instructional Frameworks. Then we'll jump to the next slide, which is our first goal, which is tailored reading Kyle and I, both of us, pretty much have the same thing. By June 2026, I'll staffle and improve student reading achievement at the middle school by expanding our reading skills classes, collaborating with the reading specialist, and leveraging professional learning communities, PLCs, for the data analysis and lesson planning. And all the steps are listed in our full plan. I didn't want to spend two hours reading it all to you right now tonight. Mr. Morenne said keep this short, so I can say that. Goal number two should be our data and ILT meetings. In the 2025-26 school year, the instruction leadership team will improve focus, communication, and collaboration by using school-specific data, twice monthly engaging diverse staff voices. Both Mr. Nelson and I bolt on the ILT meeting, and we meet twice a week, twice, sorry, twice a month. Goal number three is teacher evaluation. By June 2026, the school will increase the frequency and effectiveness of classroom visits to provide timely, actionable feedback aligned with district priorities and the deeper learning framework. We're trying to get out in the classrooms much more, and Mr. Nelson put in his also getting out on a daily basis, get out in the classrooms, giving more feedback, even if not official feedback, through the teacher evaluation, but just feedback as we're walking Goal number four, supporting families. Both our schools will enhance community engagement by expanding and promoting the Joyce Exchange or the Kennedy Food Pantry to increase family participation and partnership, ensuring all students and families have equitable access to support. We both have a food pantry that has food and clothing, stuff like that for students.
Hygiene, everything.
That's awesome.
And number five, I'm hoping Dr. Crowley's not going to make me have to do number five. I was just going to say Nelson.
The vibe is really just to make that transition as smooth as possible for the incoming principal, or it may be. So what I've done is just keep a file of every month of everything that happens. It's so much that I just sort of take for granted, to be honest with you, that I've been doing it for a while, so kind of a step-by-step thing of what needs to be done each month.
Does any of the members of the committee have questions on this, or? Mr. Morenne?
If you could, I guess, kind of like Ms. Wetzel's comment, gentlemen, if someone in the community is perhaps watching this at home or interested in making a donation, food pantry or clothing-wise, you know, especially this time of the year, people may be in need of what, what might you need, and who do we get it to?
Yeah, really, everything. Right now, we have a Giving Tree going on, where we're helping out families in the community and getting those gifts ready to go. But we also do weekly, I make food deliveries on a weekly basis. We help out kids with, you know, you get kids at this time of the year coming in without a coat, hat, and gloves, and we make sure they have everything that they need. So really, Mr. Morenne will take anything and make sure it gets to the right people.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
That's great. Ms. Wetzel, did you?
Yes, I just had two quick questions. One is regarding the reading growth for the sixth grade specifically, because we've started doing wind blocks with them. How is that going? Have you noticed? I know it's still very early in the year and it's new, but just here's how that's working, and if we've noticed any positive.
Yeah, so we'll probably notice more. It's definitely been a transition. It's been a new strategy for the teachers, but I think when we do our next STAR assessment, which will take place in January, then that's where we'll be able to see kind of how everything's falling into place.
Awesome. And do you think there's any thought of doing it, if, say, it's working well at sixth grade, if seventh and eighth grade needed it?
Yeah, so it's really hard at the seventh and eighth grade, because at the sixth grade level, you really have four major subjects. You have your math, science, social studies, and English, foreign language for some students. It's schedule-wise, it just does not work out for seventh and eighth grade.
Okay.
Yeah, their schedule is just a little bit more compact in there, and I don't know, I'm speaking for the Kennedy Ken, I don't want to speak for you, but it's, it would be a really diff, I'm not saying it can't be done, it'd be a really difficult schedule. Something would happen. It'd be a really difficult schedule. Something would happen. We'd have to get rid of something in order to do it.
Got it. Okay.
We have the same predicament because we have, our teachers teach four classes. So the fifth technically is their wind block.
Right.
That can be a teaching period. Where our other teachers in seventh and eighth grade already teach five classes per the contract. So that's where the problem comes in.
I see. Okay, that makes sense.
It would be a sixth for them, which would be above the contract.
Got it. But if, obviously, we identified students, there's reading specialists and other supports for those.
We have reading specialists already that we do pull up and work with them also. So it's not they're getting nothing.
Of course.
This is just over and above.
Yes, yeah, no, I think, I think it's great that we're doing it. I know it works well in elementary, so. And my other question actually is around the therapy dog, since it's something we do at elementary level. How, do you think that would be a good addition to the middle schools? And if so, how would you see that fitting into your current schedule?
It would be fantastic. So I was listening to you and we actually had a therapy dog for several years. And I think last year it was Lori who has Buddha and Buddha would come in. It was good for me. It was good for everybody. And we would love to get it back. Yeah, it was. And before that, we had another lady that we worked with. I don't remember her name, but she came in. But we've, we've had it for several years. We've had that going on. And you're right, you said, Caitlin, you said the health class it used to come into and then teachers would sign up to have that dog come to their class and so on. So I think it's a fantastic idea.
Awesome. Thank you.
We had dogs come in and visit our best buddies program multiple times throughout the years and it was great. That was on the eighth period, but I just think the logistics of if it's an outside agency, it doesn't. And I'm not sure how it works now, whether it's someone that actually owns a dog and comes in. If it's outside agency that works it, so I think that'd be the logistics.
Got it.
But I'm sure we could fit it in. I could go out and play ball out back.
Exactly. Thank you so much.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just curious about how you analyze the STAR assessment scores because I know for a lot of people, they could just like click through answers or something like that. So how do you differentiate between effort versus people just?
Well, you can see how much time they take on it. And so that will give you a good idea. The other good thing about the STAR assessment is you get that information immediately. And that way, we can then identify the students that need that intervention to work with the reading specialist. And we have kids take it over if we need to. And sometimes you might have kids who are pretty smart and maybe didn't give it their best shot. And now they're working with the reading specialists and they don't want to be working with the reading specialist. And so the next time around, they might give a little bit more effort. So you can kind of weed that out a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Good job. Oh, Mr. Austin?
Thank you, gentlemen, for all that you do. At a recent Community Relations Subcommittee meeting, we had two gentlemen come in from Sports Zone 101. And I think Mr. Malrenin mentioned it may be a great idea to restart the Friday night, I don't recall what it's called.
Drop-in.
The drop-in center on Fridays. I was just kind of wondering, what would your pulse be or what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so I'm actually meeting with the gentleman tomorrow from Sports Zone. So I have a meeting set up with him, kind of want to hear what he has to say. I think when they did the basketball, it was years ago, I think that was our.
SROs.
Yes, SROs that ran the year program that we had years ago. That's who ran that. But I think anything that we can do to offer it to the students and sort of keep them hot streets and keep them busy, I think is fantastic.
I have a same meeting with the gentleman Thursday morning to discuss it for the Joyce. And I'm not sure of the availability of our gymnasium here on Friday after, Friday evenings. But I think it would be a great idea to get the kids off the street and have them someplace to go. And just have open gym. So we have most of the equipment already here. I don't think it would be a big lift to buy or purchase equipment for the gymnasium and we'll just be staffing.
Well, let me know. I'll have a little more time. So we'll be out, I'll be able to get some time too, you guys on Friday. So let me know.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I just have a quick question on the comparisons between the Joyce and the Kennedy. The Joyce, we had like all staff and we will, and the Kennedy was just I. Are you just doing this so that when you leave, you can say, hey, it's gone?
Yeah, and this is just the way I word it.
I changed mine at the last minute. Mine said I all.
Okay, because I'm like, I will do this. I'm like, wow, he's going to be a busy man the next few months.
Oh, he's been busy.
But that's great. And on behalf of the committee, we want to thank you for all your years of service to the school committee and to the city and appreciate it. Having three kids, four kids go to the Kennedy, I appreciate all that you've done. So that's great. And we wish you a happy retirement and a healthy retirement.
Thank you.
Send us postcards from wherever you go.
He's got it booked.
Thank you so much.
Neil, thank you. Great, thanks. Good night.
Well, we can wait. We'll do more together. Okay, then. Want to do the introduction?
So.
Without introduction. Good job. Role reversal. Go for it.
So high school principal, Tom Quailey, formerly of the Joyce School. He's in his first year, full year, serving as the high school principal and by all accounts is doing a great job. So with his first high school school improvement plan, Mr. Quailey.
All right, so if you want to go to the next page. This includes our vision statement and the school mission. Our school council members who yesterday we voted to officially approve the school improvement plan. I have some student data on here. You do have the sheets in front of you, right? So what I did is I took the, the department of ed, they, it's called DOD District Analysis Review Tool. And they find us 10 schools to compare ourselves to that are similar in size as far as students, similar students in high needs, special, students with disabilities. And they kind of put us in there and we do some little comparisons here. So that's actually on the next page. There it is. So two of the columns are the percent meeting or exceeding expectations. If you'll see, our ELA is right in the middle compared to our other like districts or like high schools. Math, we are a little bit on the low end. But on the other hand, on the student growth, the student growth percentile, which shows how much our students grow compared to students who scored similar. And ELA, where the second highest growth in ELA and math, where I think the fourth highest in math growth. So even though the scores might be a little lower in math as a whole, but the growth is showing that they're showing more improvement. So I thought that was important data to look at. So going into the goals, and when I took all the last March, when I was kind of analyzing things and taking feedback from students and staff. One of the things we wanted to really solidify is our CPT, or Common Planning Time for Teachers. So like, say, teachers who teach biology, they meet together once every couple of weeks formally. The geometry teachers might meet, the US history teachers might, will meet. So when I set the schedule up, I mean, they have an official meeting every other week. But adding the schedule, they can meet more frequently because they're all free at the same time. They all have their same prep period. So sometimes they may work on their own. Other times, they may stop by and do some informal common planning. But anyway, we wanted to use the common planning time in our instructional leadership team, which includes our coordinators and our department heads. Mr. Rulak, the associate principal, he leads that with Ms. Boje. And between the two of those groups, then they kind of work together. The coordinators work with the common planning teams and we want to build out some common assessments. So we want to end up with like one math assessment for geometry, one for Algebra II, one for World History. And then we can start to compare students and see how they're, they're growing and teachers can work together and say, well, my kids did better in this class, this, this strand. What are you doing to teach that? And they can compare each other and work with each other. So that's the improvement goal one. So the goal is at the end of the year for them to have common assessments for each major subject. School improvement goal two is working on the school culture and getting assistant principals and all administrators in the classrooms more. So we set up three different periods throughout the year and we have 108 teachers. And we have a child where it's, each session's about five weeks. So we did five weeks from the beginning of school until Columbus Day. Then the next period started after Thanksgiving until Martin Luther King Day. And then we'll do another one in the spring. And the goal is to get into every single classroom. And it could be two minutes, it could be five minutes. I stayed in a ceramics class for about a half an hour the other day because I was intrigued on how they were doing and making their little mugs. They didn't like when I said you could just go buy one at the store. But it was very interesting watching them work and seeing the kids working on the hands-on stuff. But anyway, so the goal is to get into the classrooms more, be seen, students and staff to see us out and about more. A teacher told me the other day, a student asked her if all the teachers are getting in trouble because the administrators are in the classroom more. So it's, the kids are noticing and the teachers are noticing that we're in the classrooms a lot more. And a lot of these classes, we're in more than once. But the goal is to get into each one at least once over that period for all five of us. And then third goal is our attendance we need to improve on. I dug a little deeper today after we already had this goal anyway. And from 2013 until COVID, the high school daily, or the average attendance rate was 93%. Since COVID, it has gone between 91, a lower 91 last year, and fluctuated between 92.1. So the kids are not getting to school as much. It's not part of the plan, but if you read my newsletter I sent out on Friday, I did a little data dive. And the first thing I wanted parents to see and the students that attendance matters. And I compared term one grades received by Woburn High School students with five or less unexcused absences compared to six or more unexcused absences. Kids who had zero to five unexcused absences, 80% of them got a B minus to an A plus in their classes. Whereas if they had six or more, only 38% got B minuses to A plus. Get students with five or less unexcused absences, getting between a D minus to an C plus, only 16%. Whereas if you were absent more than five times, it was almost 20%. And the big one was students who failed, only 5% of the kids who were in class on a regular basis failed the class. Whereas 42% of kids who missed six or more days. So attendance really matters and trying to get that out to the kids and the, and the parents. And it was the first thing in the newsletter the other day. Hopefully, a lot of people read it, especially the kids who are missing a lot of classes. So anyway, with the attendance to improve it, we're monitoring it very closely. All the administrators are talking to different kids. I'll see kids in the hallway and that I notice that are high on attendance and ask them where they've been or why they're missing so much time. And we're also doing bi-weekly house meetings with the guidance councils, adjustment councils and the assistant principals. They meet to go over kids who are missing a lot of days. And students who missed so many days, they're starting to get notifications from guidance. So we're doing a lot of things and trying to get our attendance. It is better. I think it's a little over 92% so far this year. This year, we started Saturday school. We had over 71 kids over two days the first term. I'm hoping the kids didn't really like it and we have less for term two. We'll be doing those the last two weeks of term two and then we'll see if we need it for terms three and four. But the students, they're realizing that we are serious about attendance and you need to be in school to learn. You need to develop the skill of showing up. Because once they get older, if they miss 50% of their days of work, they're not going to be working very long. So, and I tell the kids, they have 40 years at Woburn High and college, it's going to be over quick and they're going to be in the real world. So anyway, that is the plan. And since I hear no questions, we'll see.
Does anybody have any questions for high school principal, Mr. Malrenin?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Quailey. How you doing? A couple of comments about attendance. I know you're new to this, you associate principals feel they knew up in your building. But just follow us if you could, just step by step. If a child's not showing up, just the process beyond, behind that. You know, the teacher takes attendance, the officer notified. What goes on after that, please?
Well, students who start to miss too many days, like they start getting, or if they miss and their parents don't call, obviously, they get, they get an email every single day. But when, every two weeks when the principals meet, they're monitoring the attendance. And they'll say, well, this kid's missed seven out of the last 10 days. And they track that kid down. They may reach out to parents. They'll reach out to the student to see if there's any reason for that.
What do you find, Mr. Quailey, as far as when you get to that point, the family's hopefully answering your questions and concerns? What might be the students reasoning for being absent so often? I know oftentimes, you know, it's a family environment, but what do you find is?
A lot of times their parents go to work and they want to stay home and sleep. A good amount of them. Some, some kids have more tolerance for sickness and whether they want to stay home with a cold or not. You know, I've said it before, back in my day, back 40 years ago, my, my mother wouldn't let me stay home. So it's a little different now, but.
I think you're bringing that point home that how important it is and you're doing the stats behind that and with the Saturday program. So I think.
I mean, I did look at the daily attendance rate last year for the 11 DOD schools and we're right in the middle. Surprisingly, I, surprised me the grade of low vote was almost 96%, which is more like middle school than elementary school. But I think that's more or less because of trades and where they have to get to the shops, you know, and the work and so forth, so.
All right. I like the idea of the students, you know, thinking that the teachers are in trouble because the administrators are out and about and being, being seen and being heard. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Wetzel?
To add on to what Mr. Malrenin said, when we were on our tour last week, there was a student that a few people spoke with that was having some trouble getting to school. And I think the conversations were really great around reminding him why it's so important. So I think that was just everything you were saying in action and we were able to see that on the tour.
I actually talked to him today. He hasn't missed a day since.
He's a great kid. Super charismatic, this kid. So I'm really happy to hear that. That's awesome. And then also, to your point of being out in the hallways, there was a student sitting outside the shop room, I think it was, and you saw him and you got him back in the classroom. So I do think that's definitely, at least in a little bit, I've been in the building making a huge difference. So I appreciate your work around that. And I'm going to ask you the same thing I did, middle school, about the therapy dog. Do you think that would be helpful at the high school?
Sure.
And you would be able to easily fit it into your deck?
That was her question, I think.
Was it? I didn't understand your question. You can ask it again. I can take it back. Your question was fantastic, by the way. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody, go right ahead.
Comment. I, I think what you had mentioned about having the same tests within each subject, as in geometry. And for my example would be pre-calculus. Last year, our two teachers would collaborate. So, you know, one would make a test one week, one might make the test another. But they structured the class in a way that we, both classes, whether it was, you know, one teacher or the other, we were learning the same thing and we were tested on the exact same thing. So for me, it made it a lot easier to talk to my peers and we could study together. Whereas like when I was taking Algebra II, it was a lot more difficult to ask my friend who had Mr. Keeley versus me having Mr. Mon. It wasn't as easily interchangeable.
That's excellent.
Good feedback.
Yeah. Any other questions? Oh, you're dismissed. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sticking on off my castings.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the school improvement plans for the middle school as well as the high school?
Sub moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Now we have the competency determination.
Yeah, so next on the agenda is the competency determination. So Ms. Boje, the Assistant Director in the Curriculum Department and Ms. Young will tackle this. One of the things I can tell you is that this is a finished product today. But as you may have seen, DESI and the state of Massachusetts have continually looked at what it means to be a high school graduate in the Commonwealth. And so with that being said, a lot of work has been done to get to this point. And so I appreciate the efforts of everybody that's been part of this process. And so I will turn it to Ms. Boje or Ms. Young.
Yes, I'm going to hand over, hand it over to Ms. Boje, who again is the Assistant Director and Grant Manager in the Curriculum Department and has been really the point of contact and spearheaded this process with DESI. I just wanted to give some context on what happened before it got to, to her, just as a reminder. So last November, once MCAS was no longer being used as the competency determination at the high school. And as a reminder, that's not the graduation requirement. We have our graduation. We have our graduation requirement courses, but then you also need to have competency determination in order to receive a diploma. And MCAS was that kind of CD, as you'll see throughout this. We then went as a, through the curriculum subcommittee, and we rewrote the competency determination policy. And one of the things that we talked a lot about in the process of creating a competency determination policy was our guess that we did not yet have all of the guidance that we needed in order to do this work. And so our goal has been to create a policy that is kind of broad in scope and that we do a lot of our guidance around what this looks like through our program of studies, which is much easier to like adopt and every single year change. And so kind of continued off that work, there was more guidance provided after we voted this one in. That's what Ms. Boege will go through, is what has to be submitted to DESI the end of this month, and that's kind of like the next phase. Again, we're still trying to keep our policy the same, but kind of increase our guidance. With that, as Dr. Crowley just mentioned, we have also just been provided what is now kind of further of an update related to kind of thinking about this competency determination at high school. And that was provided to us the beginning of the month, and that's out for public comment, feedback, and is anticipated to really kind of be finalized not until June. And so I say that because, to your point, when kind of thinking about this, this is the guidance that we have, our policy, we've tried to kind of minimally change, we're going to try to keep doing that and really just keep trying to update our guidance and clarification for that work, so that we're kind of changing this document and not necessarily this document. And so I will hand it over to Ms. Boege. She can go through the process. She can kind of walk through what we're submitting to DESI, the slight updates that have been made, just that are reflecting DESI's, but I will also say that we were told even before the submission that we were going to be given more, and we kept kind of waiting for it, that we did not really receive. And so to, you know, we've done, I know, I know, surprising. And so we've done a lot of work with it, really, Ms. Boege has done this with the high school, but we're continuing to evolve. So I'll hand it over.
All right. So as Ms. Young said, we received, you know, we knew last November after the ballot vote that MCAS was no longer going to be able to be used as a measure for competency determination. Sometime around the beginning of the summer, DESI came out with their updated guidelines for what they wanted each school district to submit to them in terms of what needs to be included in your internal competency determination guidelines and policy. And so at the beginning of last summer, we started to pull together stakeholders to start engaging in this conversation and doing this work. And so our first step was to put it out to the high school staff and say, we're looking for a diverse group of staff members representing folks across multiple content areas, especially those in the big competency content areas, English, language arts, social studies, math, and science. We thought it was important to have representatives from the counseling department, and we also thought it was important to have representatives really from multiple grade levels as well as administrators. So we pulled together a group. The group met three times over the summer. Our work really was focused around, A, understanding what is it that we're being asked to do here? B, starting to look at what do we already have as part of our Woburn guidance and policy? Given DESI's requirements, what can stay and what do we need to change and/or add on to? And then we also started to look at what are some other school districts who have begun to do this work and what does that look like? And then from there, we were able to really begin the conversations of thinking about for each component of what DESI is asking, what is it for Woburn that we need to add? And so that was the work of the summer. And then towards the end of the summer, DESI came out and gave us a little bit more information, you know, but not a whole ton more. The other thing that was really helpful throughout the fall was being able to reach out to contacts in other school districts who were also doing this work as well and sort of thinking, let's not totally reinvent the wheel, but let's also find out what our colleagues in other towns are doing and what this is looking like. And so Ms. Young was able to get some sample policies from other local districts, and that was also really helpful in helping us to draft ours. And so I don't have a presentation, but I think everybody probably had this document, so I can just sort of walk you through section by section. In section one, what we are required to do is name what are going to be the core competency determination requirements in each of the four major competency determination areas, including what is the required coursework and how do students demonstrate mastery? What does that look like? Because we can't really just say, well, they demonstrated mastery because they took the course or they passed the course. We need to be more granular per the DESI guidance. And so for each of the competency determination areas, students must earn full credit in a set of required courses. Full credit means a passing grade of 60% or higher. So in English, language arts, that would be English nine and English 10 or equivalent or higher. Students determine, or students demonstrate mastery through one of the following, either successful completion of a final assessment for the course, a capstone or portfolio project, or an equivalent measure as determined by the principal or designee. So as Mr. Quillie was talking about, a big focus and one of the school improvement plan goals around collaboration this year has been having teachers work in teams to develop those common assessments because it is more important now than ever that we have that common measure so that we can say with confidence that a student has in fact demonstrated mastery in this course, and this is the evidence that we have. The reason that we have multiple sort of pathways there is because we also recognize that there's no one-size-fits-all solution. What works really well in a ninth grade English class may not work as well in an Algebra II class in terms of the best way to have that assessment. And so we also want to provide flexibility to teacher teams to make the most informed decisions about what is the best assessment going to look like, given our context in the content area that we teach.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we either put this on the board so that folks at home can see it, or turn the light on so she's not sitting in the dark?
Yeah.
Either one.
Put the light on.
Nice. Hold it up so people can zoom in. So when I just described for mastery demonstration, you'll notice it's the same exact language across the board in each of the four content areas. What changes is just the required coursework. So I'll just quickly walk you through. In math, students earn full credit through earning a passing grade of 60% or higher. In one year of Algebra I and one year of geometry or equivalent or higher. In science, it's full credit by earning a passing grade in one year of biology or one year of physics or one year of chemistry. So that's a difference, it's only one year. And then starting with the class of 2027, our current juniors and beyond, there is an additional competency determination requirement for U.S. history, and so that can be earned through earning full credit in one year of U.S. history or equivalent or higher. And later on in the document, you can see we've got a fuller listing of what all of those potential courses could be. So that is section one. Section two, we did not have any additional requirements. We were not required to. Section three, this is an important piece where we needed to be really explicit in listing out our additional considerations for students with disabilities, for English language learners, and for late-enrolling students. The language that you'll see for students with disabilities, that was collaborated on by Dr. Ryan, Dr. Murphy, Ms. Persett, who is our out-of-district coordinator, and Ms. Rosado, who is our student services coordinator for grades nine through 12. They worked really hard on it. They contacted other school districts, and then they also sought advice from legal counsel to ensure that the language here was really, really precise and explicit and accurate. And similarly, for the section around English language learners, Ms. Caldwell, who is our director of multilingual learners, drafted a language here. You'll see there's quite a bit of language. It's mainly because for students who are English language learners who are enrolled in our English language development courses, in certain scenarios, those courses can be considered the equivalent of an English language arts course. And so there's just some language that sort of further fleshes that out to help explain what that scenario might look like. And then lastly, late-enrolling students. As part of this updated guidance, our school will have, the high school will have a competency determination review committee that will be made up of the principal or designee, our director of school counseling, our student services coordinator, and any additional relevant staff. And it is that group who would make the determination to evaluate eligibility for competency determination for any students who are late-enrolling to Woburn High School and maybe haven't had the opportunity to go through the coursework that we just described in our school. And so section four, we were required by DESI to list out, so what does the appeal process look like if there is a student, families or guardian, who would like to appeal the competency determination that was made? And so this lists out what that appeals process is. It again includes that competency determination review committee that I just described. And then section five, similarly, we need to have a process for diploma requests for any Woburn High students in the classes of 2003 through 2024 who did not earn a diploma because they did not pass MCAS. They can now go back and request a diploma. And again, similarly, it would be that competency determination review committee that would meet together to go through that process and ultimately make the determination. And then section six, you'll see, these are just requirements for us. You know, first, this policy needs to be approved by our school committee. It needs to be shared with all stakeholders. It needs to be made publicly available in multiple languages and get ultimately posted to our website as well as submitted to DESI. And then the last piece here that you'll see is this is just the fully fleshed-out listing of the current courses we offer in our program of studies that would be considered to be the equivalent of or higher than the initial courses that were offered. And we added this at the end rather than in the initial section one because we understand too that, you know, things might change. For example, AP African-American Studies, this is only the second year we've had this course. And so, you know, we might be adding more courses that could potentially fit that U.S. history requirement in the future. Who knows? And so it's better to keep that sort of as an additional that we can add to or edit as needed. And that's it.
That's it. Malful, are, anybody have any questions?
I actually had a question about some of the classes you have to take for math. So my guidance counselor last year put me from geometry to honors intro to stats, and I was talking to one of the math teachers like last week, and he said that Algebra II is required, so I'll have to be taking Algebra II as a senior. I was just wondering, because I didn't see like Algebra II anywhere on the paper necessarily. I was just wondering if Algebra II is required to graduate.
So that's a great question. So we have competency determination requirements, and then we have our own local graduation requirements. And so those requirements are where students need to complete a certain number of credits in the key competency determination areas. And so that's where, this is just competency determination, how we are determining competency in certain, with certain standards and certain courses, that what you're describing sounds more like the local graduation requirement, which is also part of the requirement to receive a diploma. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Good job. Mr. Liffson?
Another question, just to sort of comment. You know, through the curriculum subcommittee, I've watched a lot of the iterations of this. So I just wanted to thank Ms. Boege and Ms. Young for all of the work and, you know, through you, the whole team that's been working on this ever since last November. It's been a long and very difficult job with not as much direct guidance and sometimes shifting guidance and all sorts of stuff. So thank you for all the work and I appreciate the outcome.
Thank you. I just got a question about the passing. Is that like per semester, you have to pass two times, or do you only have to pass one quarter or pass one semester?
It's the cumulative grade for the course as a whole.
Okay.
Yeah. And so each of these are full course, are full year courses.
And I just had a comment. I really like this. I think it already kind of resembles what we need to do to graduate in general. So I think it'd be pretty achievable by most of the people at Woburn High.
That's awesome. Colleen?
Are we looking to approve this policy tonight for the update to it? And I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules so that we can approve this policy.
Good. Do you want a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion that we approve the amended competency determination policy with the additions that Ms. Young has provided, adding grade nine and to the first bullet and then receiving a passing grade in the equivalent of a U.S. history course or equivalent credits, class of 2027 and beyond being the only changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There you go. Thank you.
And then I don't know if we need to vote, but this document is what also will be submitted to DESI.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Woburn Public Schools, Woburn Memorial High School competency determination policy document.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along.
Thanks for staying, Mr. Quillie.
He learned a lot.
To redistricting, which is just maybe an update on what's going to happen this week for your Zoom meeting, and then we'll have a vote on next week. So, short and sweet.
All right. So we had our resource and capital planning meeting, and Ms. Wetzel can add any information there. But ultimately, a reminder that we will have the community forum on Wednesday evening at, sorry, Thursday evening at 6:00 on Zoom. We'll be providing a presentation as well as we'll be doing Q and A to the best extent possible. We'll be sending out a communication on Friday with any information from the community forum as well as just a reminder of what will be coming in front of all of you next Wednesday. It's been very helpful to have our subcommittee time, where I think we've been working through what are the things that are kind of most pertinent information that needs to come forward to this group. So we'll prepare all of that information for next Wednesday. We'll have everything sent to all of you. But again, we're really looking at kind of the three options of whether we are going to continue to move some of our components. We're looking into the buffer zones. We're not doing anything for this year, as well as also looking at our middle school map and consideration of adding buffer zones there as well. And then just a reminder, this vote next week is just the determination of the plan, what decision we're making, and then the implementation of that will happen in January to come back to the committee as well as other stakeholder groups.
Okay. Sounds like a plan?
I don't know if there's anything else to do.
No, that was great. And we did meet in resources today, and I'll go over those notes later. But just to note on the community forum, I think Courtney, Ms. Young, it'll be Q and A, and those questions and answers will be recorded and submitted to the redistricting website. So if you're not able to make it, but you would like to read through the questions, you'll be able to do that.
Awesome. Moving right along to the second reading of the policies by Mr. Austin. Who's going to take this lead? So James, you want it?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the second reading of the policy that I'm looking to bring forward to overall give, offer protection to all students within the district. The first policy that I'm looking to bring forward is AC, which is the non-discretion policy, including harassment and retaliation.
Make the motion. It's the full.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No. Again.
Okay. That's five one. Didn't match with my head. There we go. Okay. But motion passes, so. So what was the outreach? This is the second reading. We have to wait for the first formal reading, the next meeting? Or just, are we going to policy with this, or what are we doing with these?
We're not going to policy.
Okay. So what's the expectation? We just table it?
Yeah, but I think we would table for a final vote.
Yeah, this is the second reading, so it needs three.
Yeah. All right, so we'll take that up with the next. All right, so moving right along to our subcommittee reports. Finances meeting next Tuesday, so we have no minutes for today. And community relationships have not met, correct? Curriculum and data trends have not met?
We have not met.
Okay. Policy subcommittee, we have not met. Okay, and resources, you broke the record.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we've met. We've met twice, but I'm only going to, I'm going to summarize 1110.
We've met twice, but I'm only going to, I'm going to summarize 11:10, because our 11:10 meeting was a lot about redistricting. And then we met again today, which I will summarize and fully read at our next meeting. But we met at 11:10 at 5:45, in attendance for Ms. Austin, Ms. Cormier, Dr. Crowley, Ms. Young, and myself. We did have public comment from Ms. Kuhberry. And I, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but if you go into my notes, you can read her public comment along with, in my notes, you'll find links to the redistricting presentation that Ms. Young put together. And it's fantastic. I encourage everyone to look at it, as well as a link to our redistricting website, which has a ton of helpful information on it for families. And we did a redistricting update. We talked about work done by both the redistricting advisory committee as well as work done with Sandborn. We talked about the redistrict advisory committee meeting and the things that came out of it. So we went through pros and cons of both, we're calling them buffer zones, formerly gray lines, but buffer zone seems to be the term used by many other school districts. So buffer zones would be when you, if you look at our maps and you have a school, a component could go to one of two schools in that, in that buffer zone. So we, we talked about the pros and cons of that. We talked about the pros and cons of moving students. And then we talked the pros and cons of not doing anything. We also talked about this being a yearly process and how it's something that the committee will review every year ongoing until we have new schools or a different solution. We talked about building utilization, and there's a full slide presentation on that as well, which is also linked in my notes. We discussed the middle schools as well, buffer zones. Do we keep the current configuration or do we move components? You'll find a list of the timeline in there, which is October 9th through December 17th, which is the school committee's vote. And then something upcoming, which was already alluded to, which would be the informational parent night on December 11th. And we adjourned at 5:45 PM. And then we met again today. Again, it was about redistricting as well as Director Burnham gave a presentation about making our future North Woburn School ECP a green building. And I'll have a lot more information on that. It was a fabulous presentation. I think to note, though, we did 3 to 0 vote. Would like to have EverSource to give a presentation to the school committee about what we would need to make the building, I'm probably using the wrong words here, but EUI-certified and green and carbon neutral. So that is something that we would like to move forward to the full school committee. But I'll have those officially in my notes, but I do think that's important to note.
Okay, put that as a future agenda item or?
Yes, yes.
That's great. And SSA?
I have to say, right, this evening, Madam Chair, we will have minutes for that at our next meeting.
Okay, so Correspondence, there was a Correspondence drop here tonight from Judy Eltevista, just supporting the gray area for the redistricting. So, and I know that the chairman probably has more, but we'll get to that at the next meeting. Future agenda items? Oh, sorry.
Future agenda items, one would be the EverSource. And two, I think we should look at the Therapy Dog program. We heard a lot about it today. Both from, well, how we think it could be beneficial to middle and high school as well as from the CPAC and a parent at the Goodyear here. And I can tell you, it's worked wonders inside of that building for my kids specifically, as well as others. And an example, after talking to the handler, I saw him on Saturday. There, a kid fell at field day. This was at the end of last school year. And Lily made an appearance at the hospital, brought a stuffed animal. I mean, it just made the kid's day. And Lily was there at picture day and got her picture taken. And I also have a similar example that was quoted in public comment. But my kiddo, my oldest, has a love-hate relationship with school. And it was a Friday, and she really didn't want to go in. And I saw Lily, and I mean, she ran. She took off. So I don't know if it needs to be referred to a Subcommittee, but I'd like to make a motion that we explore more what a Therapy Dog program would look like at elementary, middle, and high school.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we'll do that. Budget time coming along. We can add that to our list. Anything else for future agenda items? Well, one of the things, maybe Mr. Mallrannan in the next year report back from MASC and MAS.
Sure.
So we can. Yeah, that would be great. Do we have an executive session?
We don't need it.
Okay, all right. So do I? Second? Do you have a second?
Second, yes.
All those in favor? Yay! Good night, everybody.